Formal session today. We're going to start off with city council briefings. And first off is our federal legislative update. And Deborah Bryant, if you can get things going.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Pleased to introduce you to our federal lobbying group today, which they have been here before. We have had them for about a year and a half now. In 2021, we put out an RFP and the Becker team won. And we have some good news this year on all that our team has done this year. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce you to Alfonso Lopez and Anthony Bedell.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, members of the council. I'm here with my colleague, Anthony Bedell. We are partners here at the firm and working on the, is this the clicker? All right. And it's been a real honor, a privilege to work with the city. And before I continue, your staff here in the city is amazing. And the agency staff, the ability to sort of respond to, in some cases, one o'clock in the morning, requests for information. And it's not just one agency. It's not just transit. It's not just one department. It's across the board. And so before I sort of begin with this formal presentation, I have to sort of commend the city on the incredible staff that you have. Thank you very much. So let me just begin. Is this working? How do I make this work? Can somebody move the? It is on. Technical malfunction. I apologize. There we go. Yeah. So just by way of background, the Becker Law Firm has been around for over 50 years. We have over 50 years of experience, in fact, with the lead lobbyists on the team for the city of Virginia Beach. We have 15 offices in Washington, DC, Florida, New York, New Jersey, California. We are arguably one of the most diverse firms in all of Washington DC, which has helped us play with the Tri-Caucus, the African-American Caucus, the Hispanic Caucus, and the Asian-American Pacific Islander Caucus, and has helped us be much more, I think, effective than some other firms across DC. We're also exactly bipartisan. There are an equal number of Republicans, an equal number of Democrats in our firm, which has helped us immeasurably accomplish our goals on behalf of the city. We have local knowledge here, in regional ties, and also a national reach. And then our firm was recently named one of the top performing lobby firms by Bloomberg Government in all of Washington DC. Next slide. This is our federal lobbying team, myself and Anthony Bedell, Omar Franco, who's the director of our office, Amanda Wood, former legislative director in the US Senate, the amazing Clarence Williams, former chief of staff in the US House, and our newest member of the team, Perry Adair, who is a Georgetown law grad and amazing. That's a technical term, amazing. Next slide. Anthony is the former Deputy Assistant Secretary for Congressional Intergovernmental Affairs at the US Department of Transportation, and in my opinion, is arguably one of the best individuals to fulfill that role in the last 30 years. He is adored on both sides of the aisle for his effectiveness and his ability to cut through the clutter when it comes to transportation and transit, as well as issues involving the Army Corps. He also served at the US Department of Labor and the US Small Business Administration, and has over 24, 25 years of experience at the state level, local level, and the federal level. And interestingly enough, don't tell him this because it gives him a big head, he was named one of the most, the quote was in Politico, "He was the influential lobbying firepower in Washington DC." Next slide. I also, this is me, Alfonso Lopez, I've got 25 years of federal and Virginia legislative experience. I was the former Senate staffer and also the Assistant Administrator of the US Small Business Administration, working on Congressional Intergovernmental Affairs in President Barack Obama's administration. I have extensive experience with public bodies, including being the lobbyist for Virginia Beach back in 2001 to 2005, as well as Miami-Dade County and Fairfax Water Authority and other large municipal entities across the Commonwealth and across the nation. I'm also proud of the fact that for four years, I was the lead federal lobbyist for Virginia, when I served in the Governor Kane's administration as the head of Congressional and Intergovernmental Affairs. And we, at that time, we worked a great deal on Virginia Beach issues and port authority issues, Army Corps issues. And for the last, goodness, 12 years now, I've been a member of the Virginia House of Delegates and actually shared an office wall with Rocky Holcomb, the city council, where I represent Arlington and Fairfax. Next slide. So to say that 2022 has been successful on behalf of the city of Virginia Beach would be an understatement. We've been working with the incredible Deborah Bryant on your staff, and we have really pursued an aggressive agenda in terms of taking advantage of federal opportunities for the city, not only in federal grants and the historic comprehensive immigration, I mean, comprehensive infrastructure bills that have passed over the last year and a half, but also through the return of congressionally directed spending, which are formerly known as earmarks. Suffice to say that we have been very, very successful in terms of bringing back funding, bringing back policy support, and also approval for city initiatives that go outside of the funding realm. Next slide. Here are the results. When this slide was made, we had secured $48.8 million for the city. As of this morning at 10:00 AM, we have secured $77 million for the city in terms of federal grant funding. We've also secured a larger number of submitted earmark requests from the delegation than other communities of similar size in the region. And we've also secured, in the initial stages of the preliminary House-supported bill for federal appropriations, $8.75 million, and in the Senate bill, $6.4 million. And then on top of that, you had some initiatives that you cared deeply about that needed to get passed, not through the appropriations process, not through the grant process, but through innovative ways to accomplish things legislatively. And that meant making amendments, including report language on specific pieces of legislation that were going to pass. So your top priority was given to us last year. It's a three-by-three-by-three comprehensive regional coastal storm risk management study, the funding, and also the inclusion of the, in the Army Corps' work plan. And after not being able to get done, we got it done, including the $1.5 million to make the study happen. On top of that, we were able to deal with the, as a part of the National Defense Authorization Act, we were able to get approved, the deal with the Navy, for the city to acquire the Midway Manor eight-acre site and the Oceana Boulevard site for the schools to put the buses there. In each of these cases, it's easier said than done. We had to work with the delegation, have letters sent, and then, most importantly, coordinate phone calls to people at the White House, OMB, the Army Corps, the Navy, to accomplish these goals. In each case, it took a period of weeks and months, and we're very proud of the fact that despite not being able to get some of these things done over the last couple of years, they were accomplished within three months in both cases. Next slide. So current priorities. We've got to go back. As of a week and a half ago, the House Republican Caucus has agreed to continue earmarks, and so we are going to go back and fully attack and be aggressive in securing priority funding for the city. We also have to take care of some highway and transit issues, bridges, transit, including doing some raised grants that we've been successful on this year. We have the new, with these new infrastructure bills that have been literally, not just generational, 100-year bills, in terms of the trillions of dollars that have gone into helping with climate change, helping with transit and transportation issues, helping with housing, helping with some fundamental issues that cities have to deal with. These are five-year funding bills that we can go back to, to get not only formula funding, but also project funding in a way that we haven't been able to do in the past. Also, some stormwater resiliency issues, some Homeland Security and BRIC grants through FEMA, especially regarding the flooding issues in the city, and then also some significantly important ocean and military headquarters issues. Next slide. So what's coming down the pike? Road and highway infrastructure spending, Opportunity Zone funding, which is what I like to call HUD funding, some things with COPS grants, the COPS grants out of the Department of Justice, that former delegate Holcomb and I used to talk about a lot, museum and library funding that you haven't taken advantage of in the past, K-12 funding, and things like opioid abatement that is now, you have the money to address in ways that maybe you haven't been able to address in the past. Next slide. Army Corps work plan, harbor maintenance trust fund, DOT and FEMA grants, National Defense Reauthorization Act, and then something that has been at the back of my mind and becoming something that's increasingly important for the city is beach re-nourishment and replenishment. And we need to start thinking about laying the groundwork for that for future years, as well as the Water Resource Development Act funding. Now, I know that you have, through your agency staff, sort of focused on what you've had in the past, but there's the opportunity now to start thinking about future needs. And so those are things that we want to be pursuing. Next slide. And then our focus always. These are sort of the major areas of funding for the city. Transportation, it's called THUD, Housing and Urban Development, labor, HHS, education, energy and water, commerce, which is actually where the police funding is located, and then also, like I said again, and I can't reemphasize this enough, multi-generational, important infrastructure funding that goes to cities to be successful. You have done, we have done, your staff has done, and let's, let me back that up. Your staff, working with us, we have been incredibly jointly team-like successful in accomplishing things for the city this year. We're poised to do more in the years to come. I cannot thank you enough for how easy this relationship has been, and I cannot thank you enough, once again, for the quality and the diligence and the resourcefulness of the city staff. So next slide. And that's it.
What a great presentation. And I must tell you, when Ms. Bryant recommended your firm, I was really impressed because it looked like you were going to be a group who could really deliver, and that's looks like what you've been doing. So I know that Congress passed a giant infrastructure bill. What kind of funding do you think we might get from that?
It really depends on the program, but what you've seen, ma'am, is unprecedented increases in beach, in coastal residency, unprecedented increases in affordable housing, unprecedented increases in transit and transportation. And so it really depends, but so you'll be getting, through formulaic funding, you'll see increases to a factor of like two or three times that you might have seen in the past over these next four, four years.
And the other thing that we're seeing is because of the inflation, our current projects are, are coming in way over what we had budgeted for, and it is a real concern that these projects that we, we thought we had fully funded, we may not be within reach. Is there any possibility for help with some of these inflationary costs?
Yes. I think that what you've seen with the Biden administration is really attacking that, that overall issue of inflation and, and, you know, supply chain issues that are like addressing or affecting a lot of these things head-on. But I think with the money that we're maybe able to access, it will help with the overall costs of things. But it would be really a case-by-case instance where we'd have to know what was happening and how it was happening.
Oh, we've got detailed lists, and we have detailed lists of what it's supposed to cost, and now it's 5 million more, 12 million more.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. Within the 12.
No, and that's the thing. It's like, as I said in the memo that I submitted to everyone, cities like Virginia Beach in the last four years through the COVID-19 pandemic have had the white-hot spotlight come back on them because it's not the federal government, it's not even the state government sometimes, it's cities who are the deliverer of resources and support and social safety nets. And you need to be able to work and effectively deliver those, those resources to the citizens of your community.
We were, we were very fortunate with the Lesnar Bridge because it was a shovel-ready project that we were able to jump on that and get the federal funding because we were ready.
Right.
So some of these projects that we, I'm talking about now, we're ready, but all of a sudden, price tag is blown up.
Yeah. No, it's, it's happening not just here in the Commonwealth, but across the, across the nation as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Bobby.
My pleasure.
Hey, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lopez. I really appreciate you being here and agree with the vice mayor. It was a wonderful presentation. And I was intrigued by a couple of things that were in your slide about looking ahead, and I think building on what the vice mayor said about having shovel-ready projects. I wonder if you could provide any insight on how the city could be best positioned to take advantage of some of the things? Specifically, I do have a question. It's a K-12 programming, which obviously we need, and, and expanded support for that would be very beneficial to our community. But as you know, many communities around the country are also having problems with the actual brick and mortar, with the school buildings, and we're, we have an incredible backlog in Virginia Beach for school construction.
Right.
It's a topic that we discuss a lot at council, but I, I may have missed it, but I didn't see that on the list about things for looking ahead. So I guess one question is, in addition to the programming, is there grant opportunities or federal support for the, for K-12 school construction and other, and other sort of facilities, supporting facilities? And then, and I'll stop talking after this.
No, no.
I'm curious about museums and libraries, too, because I think in both, both museums, and I work for a museum admittedly, so I have a special interest in that, but I also recognize the impact that museums and libraries have and cultural institutions have on a community. And we, we've had discussions here about one museum in particular, but I think it's, there are many that would benefit from federal support and unlock potential. So how can we best prepare ourselves to take advantage of them?
Well, I'm actually meeting with the aquarium tomorrow and doing a tour, and then actually having some conversations with Ms. Bryant as well about some other opportunities. But I'll tell you that that funding stream in the federal appropriations budget is not that utilized, and there's opportunities there for, you know, some critical gap funding to address a construction project or programmatic funding. And so what's fascinating about the museum and library fund is that it's not, it's like this hidden gem that not a lot of people take advantage of. Going back to your, your question about school construction, school construction in the nation is one of the major, major concerns and has been this sort of like trillion-dollar issue that for over a decade, over two decades now. You've got parts of Virginia where they're not just trying to think about gifted and, gifted AP and IB programs, but they're just trying to keep the lights on. And so this is an issue that is, as I completely agree with you, is a significant one. I will find if there's an answer for you, because I don't know specifically, and I don't want to give you bad information, about the, the Inflation Reduction Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law. But I know that there are also initiatives in Congress moving forward to address these things as well, especially in the new year.
I appreciate that. I'm just curious. The distinction between programming and capital support. But then also, I would say, and I think it's great that you're visiting the aquarium, and I appreciate that very much. I'd like to put Virginia Mocha on your radar as well. Virginia Mocha is poised, and they're really interested in terms of an expansion or even possible relocation. It's well-known that they've thought about that. That's the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art.
Yeah.
It serves the entire Commonwealth and others, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there that could be enhanced by federal, possible federal support, especially if those resources are available. So maybe on another visit, we can get you over there.
One thing I will say, and we don't know these facts yet, but there are, in the House last year, there were limitations in the number of community development projects or community development funding projects that any one member of Congress was allowed to introduce, or in the House of Representatives. It's 15. And so the fact that we had five with the Congresswoman at the time, and then all five of her requests were included in the House-approved preliminary appropriations bill was sort of huge. And so you have to make decisions about where the, you have to make, you have to make decisions about where the priority is going to be. And, and so while, you know, honestly, when Deborah and I and Anthony talk about a lot of the projects, and there are dozens, we have to sort of figure out where the best bang for the buck is going to be. And so we leave that to you and your city manager and your leadership team to decide where those opportunities might lie, and we will help you with each of those. But sometimes it's like, it's got to be Nemo Parkway, it's got to be Alaskan Road, it's got to be, you know, the Emergency Operations Center, it's got to be something that is even higher priority. But as a person who cares deeply about the same issues that I think you care about, I wish that there was, you know, no limitation on the number of earmarks we could, we could submit.
Hey, John.
Since the news speaker, we think it's the news speaker. But the party has said they want to look at deficit spending. So do you expect that all the funding profiles that carried over from the past House across the fit-up are going to hold true with the new House budget resolution? Or do you expect those numbers to be adjusted downward to meet the physical messaging of the new leadership?
I would say that the House might pass something, but it has to go through the House and the Senate.
Yes, but you can't get money at both of them.
No, I understand, I understand. The issue is going to be, you know, I, I think they want a clean slate. I think they want to actually begin this new session of Congress with a clean slate of books. When I have conversations with Republican and Democratic members of the House, it feels like, you know, they've seen the good that's happening with a lot of these bills, they've seen the investments that are being made in critical areas that need those investments yesterday, and they, they see the good that's going to come out of this appropriations bill, and they want to say, all right, this is done, we're moving on. But I'm happy to have a conversation with you after the fact.
Yeah, I would be interested. And also, could you give us an update as to chemistry as we move between the latest extension and hopefully have an authorization appropriation bill for the balance of the year?
Well, you know, this is the holiday season, and we celebrate any number of important religious holidays. And one of the most important holidays in DC is the annual discussion of whether or not we're going to shut down the government. And...
I'm not referring to another continuing resolution. I'm talking about actually passing an omnibus that gets us to 30th September.
Yeah, I think you will. I think you're going to see, and I can't, if I had a crystal ball, I'd be able to, you know, I'd be a lot wealthier and, you know, but I can tell you that I think when you talk to rank and file members, when you talk to members of the US Senate, they are anxious to move forward. There's only a very, it's a significant but relatively narrow focus on defense for where the disconnect is, and I think they can get past that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr.
But I, you know, we'll see.
Can you speak from a microphone? Thank you.
My voice isn't booming enough? They sent language around today, the House and the Senate, to pass a continuing resolution to December 23rd. The government was supposed to fund to this 15th. That's an indication that they are moving towards a deal, and they just need more time. So, and then to answer your other question, from my perspective about next year, I think the House, being Republican, you'll see deficit spending reduction and budget cuts in their appropriations acts moving forward. Now, how that's reconciled with the Senate, et cetera, moving forward, but I think you'll see that out of the House for sure.
It won't be retroactive, though.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hey, thank you.
My pleasure, and, and thank you as well.
Thank you, Alfonso.
Okay, next up, VB Thrive update. And thank you for that great presentation, and it is indeed most encouraging.
Thank you.
Welcome, Michelle.
Good afternoon, and it is so, we are so honored to be here today, and I'm not sure if everyone knows, but I am going to be moving to Austin for a temporary period. I will keep my home in Virginia Beach, and we will move back here for retirement, so I'll still be contributing to Virginia Beach in my hometown. I did want to tell you that it has been one of the highlights of my career, working with this innovative city council, and I will carry some of your creative work to Texas as I move there. And I do want to introduce you, Carrie, come on up. Carrie Yates, who has been on our team, leading the Virginia Beach Thrive effort from the programming side since its inception, and she is going to give the presentation today, and then will be available for any questions. Thank you so much.
We will miss her very much.
Michelle, on behalf of our council and a lot of people, we're very grateful for the work that you have done, and, you know, be assured you will be part of the heart and soul of Virginia Beach in perpetuity. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I did thank you for one thing I did want to say, and it was said before, and the other speaker, is working with the talented, hard-working employees of Virginia Beach has been incredible. It is so easy to work, they are so caring, so giving, and we have caught, had calls at 8:00 PM and 6:00 in the morning, so you have the hardest-working team I've ever worked with. So congratulations on that.
Much thanks. And welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you to the members of city council for having us here today. I am going to give an overview of the VB Thrive project and our progress so far. So to start out, I wanted to give a little overview of the project as a refresher. As you know, the project's community focus is on the ALICE population and also low-income families. So ALICE is an acronym that United Way uses, and it stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed. So we know that there's a large percentage of residents, 36% in the city of Virginia Beach, that earn well above the federal poverty level but are still unable to make ends meet. They're just one emergency, one car breakdown from potentially losing their job, being homeless, homeless. So that really is the focus of the VB Thrive project. The project operates in two different program tracks. So the first is a short-term model, and in the short term, an individual comes into the program, they're paired with a one-on-one case manager, they complete a needs assessment, and then they are referred to one of, one or more of a network of community partners to help address the needs that they identify. They can also earn incentives for completing things like financial counseling, first-time homebuyer classes, and they can also receive some gap funding to help them get caught up on their bills and meet their goals. There's also a long-term component of the program. So in the long term, we use a mobility mentoring framework, which is a counseling approach that we use in a number of our other programs at United Way. And in mobility mentoring, an individual is paired with a mentor who works alongside them, really partners with them in developing a personalized goal action plan, setting steps to reach their goals, and following their progress throughout the program. And so then, once an individual creates their goal action plan, they're similarly referred to one or more of our network of providers to address their needs in housing, workforce development, and then wraparound, which really includes everything else that they might need. Individuals in our long-term program are meeting with their mentor every other week, so it's really an intensive case management program. And similarly, they're able to earn achievements or incentives and get some gap funding to help them meet their goals as well. Next slide. So as... goals as well. Next slide. So as with all of our programs at United Way, we are not able to implement such a project alone. And so in addition to our internal staff, we've assigned MOUs with four lead partner agencies. And so our lead partner agencies have supported us with the development and implementation of the project, and they also employ staff members who serve as the mentors and the case managers for the project. So our four lead partners are the Independence Center, Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Urban League of Hampton Roads, and Catholic Charities. And I want to take this time to introduce you to a couple of our staff. We have our two internal lead mobility mentors here, Maureen Flowers and Hannah Montgomery. And then we have representatives from several of our lead partner organizations as well. Tanisha Davis from Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, and Nicole Davis from the Independence Center. And unfortunately, Catholic Charities and Urban League could not be here today. We've also built a network of 36 referral partners that we are working with to help our clients meet the needs that they identify through the program. And so this is just a highlight of a few of our referral partners that we've worked with in the first few months of implementation. So to highlight some of the things that we've accomplished this year through the development, implementation, and launch of the program, of course, we've hired key staff and brought on our lead partner agencies, implemented a case management platform, which allows us to collect data on the individuals that we're serving, and then report on outputs and outcomes back to city council. We've created a VB Thrive Resource Center, which is located at Virginia Beach Central Library. The staff there have been gracious hosts and very engaged partners in the VB Thrive project. The resource room officially opened in June, and our VB Thrive project officially went live July 1st. So since our launch in July, we've received 231 referrals. Forty-eight of those individuals were found ineligible for the program. So most of the reasons for ineligibility was that they are not a resident of the city of Virginia Beach, or that they're not safely and stably housed. So if someone is street homeless, if they meet the definition of homelessness that the Housing Resource Center uses, we refer them to the Housing Crisis Hotline and to the Housing Resource Center. And so of those eligible individuals, we've enrolled 89 into the program. We've also distributed just under $53,000 in gap funding. So those are funds to help people get caught up on rent, mortgage, utilities, assist with childcare, transportation, all those sorts of things. Next slide. So this graphic demonstrates the participant pipeline in the program. And so all of this data was as of November 30th. Since then, or excuse me, at that point, we had 39 individuals pending intake. So they were eligible for the program. They were just waiting to actually meet with a case manager and enroll in the program. And since December 1st, 10 of those individuals have been enrolled in the program, and we've received 32 new referrals just in the first 12 days of December. Next slide. This is a little demographic breakdown of participants that have been enrolled in the program so far. Wanted to highlight a couple things. I think it's interesting that the age of the participants, most of our participants are coming from that millennial generation. So they're at a point in their lives where they are starting careers, they potentially have young families, they're really at a point where it's important for them to start thinking about savings, right? Saving for retirement, how are they going to put their kids through college, all of those sorts of things. And then in the planning for the project, we honed in on a couple neighborhoods in Virginia Beach that are highly populated with ALIS families, and we're seeing those numbers reflected in our demographics. So the majority of participants are from 23462 ZIP code, which is Williams Farm, Bayville area, and Green Run, which are two of the neighborhoods that we had targeted for the program. Next slide. So the bridge to self-sufficiency is the theory of change framework that we use in the mobility mentoring program. So it, we use it to measure individuals' progress across these key pillars of family stability, well-being, financial management, education, and employment, which also goes hand in hand with earnings level. So we're able to use this bridge to self-sufficiency to measure individuals on how much income they're spending on their housing, what their level of educational attainment is, and what their household earnings are. Next slide. So when an individual enters the long-term mentoring program in VB Thrive, we do this bridge assessment with them, and the highest possible score on the bridge is 100. And among our participants, the average score at intake was 62. And so what this tells us is that most of the participants in the VB Thrive project are living in some sort of a shared housing arrangement, or they're paying more than a third of their income towards their rent. And we really want to get them to the point where they're paying a third or less of their income towards their rent or mortgage. Most of them have completed some sort of entry-level job training or have an associate's degree. And most households are earning between 30 and 50% of the area median income. And our goal in the program is to get them to 80% or above of area median income. And so what that means in the city of Virginia Beach for a single person is an annual income of $53,000 for a single person. And for a family of four, $75,000. So we are working with households to get them to that point. Next slide. This is a little impact story of one of our participants that we've worked with. Her name is Natalie, and she lost her grandmother during the pandemic. Her grandmother was really her only supportive family member. Natalie has always been able to maintain a stable job and housing on her own without financial support from her family. But she found out from her landlord that he was going to be selling the property and that she was going to have to find a new place to live. So Natalie worked really hard with her mentor to find a new apartment that she could afford, given her current budget. But she didn't have enough savings to cover a first month's rent and a security deposit. So VB Thrive stepped in. We were able to support her through our gap funding and allow her to sign her lease quickly and secure that apartment so that she had a place to live. And now she continues to work with her mentor to improve her credit score and build her savings account, which are some of her goals for the next six months. Okay. Another component of the VB Thrive project is a nonprofit grant program. And so we plan to roll this nonprofit grant, RFP, out next week. So the grant will serve two purposes. One is for nonprofit programs that provide services to Virginia Beach residents across one or more of our bridge pillars. So organizations that provide emergency housing, education, childcare, mental health, financial housing counseling, those sorts of things. And then the other purpose will be to provide general operating support for nonprofit organizations that are still struggling as a result of the pandemic. So very similar to the grants that we did through the VB Relief Program. And we anticipate that this RFP will open next week. So some of our next steps in the new year, we have a plan to expand our community outreach. So of course, we're going to focus on those neighborhoods of Bayside, Green Run, Oceana, Bayside that were identified through our ALIS data. We will be doing outreach to churches, neighborhood associations, civic leagues to share information about the program. We've been working closely with the Central Library staff on some marketing efforts there. There are table tents on all of the tables at the library with QR codes that individuals can scan to refer themselves to the program. We've also updated our branding there, and our VB Thrive staff will be setting up a table right at the front door to the Central Library on Tuesday evenings, which is one of their highest traffic times there. We're also facilitating some group workshops in the new year. So we'll be doing those with our partner agencies. We are starting off in January with Catholic Charities doing a financial counseling workshop for participants, and then following that in February with interview prep and resume building workshop that we'll be doing in partnership with HR Cap. And then our marketing campaign for the new year is New Year, New Goals. We'll be doing an eBlast campaign, some targeted digital marketing, print ads in the Beacon, some streaming, radio, and media relations. So at this time, I'm going to hand it off to Jay Grant, the Executive Director of LISC, to update everyone on the business relief port, grant portion of the project.
Next slide. Yes. Thank you so much, Carrie. Thank you to the city council here, to Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate the time. Again, Jay Grant, Executive Director of LISC, Local Initiative Support Corporation of Hampton Roads. It has been truly a pleasure to work with United Way of Southampton Roads and with the city of Virginia Beach. And so this program, the Virginia Beach Thrive, VB Thrive Business Relief Program, was to address businesses, to assist them, businesses that have lost 15% revenue or more. This was deemed a COVID-related impact loss from their 2019 taxes to their 2020 taxes. And so you can see here, we serve 475, I'm sorry, 475 applications came through since February of 2022. And this is through November 30th of this year. We awarded 174 applicants, and the awards were in the range of 5,000 to 50,000. And I must say, I'll backtrack and say that we were targeting, of course, tourism-related businesses as well as other small businesses. And we'll get into some of this in just a second. We awarded up to, up to November 30th, we awarded over $3 million. So you can see $3,115,000 were distributed to Virginia Beach-based businesses. And these grants primarily went to wages and benefits as well as payable, such as rent and supplies. And there are 27 pending applications currently. And so one of the number one reasons that a business would be pending is what's known as the UEI, the Unique Entity Identifier. If you've done business with the federal government, you probably formally know this as the DUNES number. So they changed, if you go to SAM.gov, S-A-M.gov, they changed it to UEI several months ago. And what we're noting is that it often takes a period of time. It could take weeks, it could take a month to get businesses enrolled in that, in that simple process, but it's a necessary process because it's federally sourced dollars. So we still have a few more of those. And LISC proposed a, a final round to start, if the city council is on board with that, that would start at the beginning of the coming year, January 2023, and go through March of the same year. And what we feel is that we would kind of round out the, the applications, get, you know, address any of the pending, and knock out a few more businesses. And, and again, this is all in the name of addressing businesses that have, have suffered from the, the long-term negative impacts of COVID-19 shutdown. And you can see on the next slide, please, you can see the range of the types of businesses that we've served. The number one, you can see accommodation and food services. You also see other services. And then you see a diversity of, of businesses here in between. But when it comes to tourism-related businesses, really, it's a matter of what do you consider tourism? And so we really look at accommodation and food services as well as other services. Sometimes you could even include fishing and hunting. So really, we feel pretty confident that there was a good proportion of tourism-related businesses that were served. Next slide, please. And this is the last slide here that we have today. You can see the number of small women and minority-owned businesses. So this is a SWAM certified businesses. You can see that there was an overwhelming majority, 73% versus 26%. There was 1% that are not reporting. So this is self-reported. And so, of course, these were verified by LISC. But there could be other, and probably are other businesses that meet some of these requirements. Maybe they're veteran-owned businesses, maybe they're women-owned businesses, but, but they may not be certified. But we feel confident that we were able to get these dollars out to these types of businesses. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Carrie.
Any questions? Okay, Del Cino and John. And then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation. I did ask for this. I wanted to update, and I wanted the public to kind of hear where those dollars are going.
Couple, what's the, the total budget and then the percentage against what you've already spent since July?
The total budget for the project is $15 million. I don't have an update on the current number that we've spent to date.
Is there a sunset on when those dollars need to be spent?
So the plan was to spend about $5 million each year.
Okay. Tell me more about the process for your partnering, because you said there's going to be a RFP process for certain services, but then you have, you showed a slide of a snapshot of some of the partners you already have. What, how do you distinguish the two?
So there's a couple different RFPs that we've done through VB Thrive. The first was an RFP that we put out early this year for our lead partners. And so those, the organizations that we signed MOUs through for that, through that RFP were the four that were highlighted on that slide, Catholic Charities, Independence Center, Urban League, and Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. So we put that RFP out early this year and received proposals from organizations to join the project as a lead partner. And so that MOU process is done. We have our four lead partners for the project. The RFP that will be released later this month is nonprofit grants for organizations providing human services in the city of Virginia Beach or that serve residents of the city of Virginia Beach. And then also for nonprofits who are maybe in a different, maybe arts and sciences, but are still impacted or struggling financially due to COVID.
And a gentleman from LISC, sorry, do you have a process for granting funding for capacity building versus just paying the bills?
So technically speaking, these funds could go towards a variety of eligible expenses. And so in some cases, the funding would go just simply to, to salaries. In other cases, it may go to other, other necessary costs. So I'm not sure if, if that's more of a question in terms of future-oriented or in terms of what we funded.
Yeah, Patrick.
And Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Miles, the funding is pretty flexible in terms of what it could be used for. I think the big hurdle that we're experiencing with this current funding is that it's American Rescue Plan Act funding, and it's very narrowly tailored to businesses and organizations that have experienced a loss between 2019 and 2020 and can demonstrate at least a 15% loss. And that is one of the difficulties that we're having with actually getting individuals to qualify for it. But it can possibly be used for technical capacity building.
Thank you for that, because that's really what we need for these businesses to drive and not just pay their bills. And the last question is, how do you determine how much these nonprofits get? And I wanted, I saw you had a sampling of some diversity there, but just making sure that particularly in the areas, you say, in Green Run, Bayside, which is, was just my area, making sure that it's going to those folks that are, those organizations that are already working with that demographic. Make sure, because how do you determine who gets what, how much?
Yeah. So the grants are, it is $10,000 per organization. That's, that's the maximum amount of award. And so we'll be looking at the demographics that are served by those organizations, whether they serve ALIS families, low-income families, what neighborhoods they serve in, what services they're providing. Are they providing an unmet need, or is it kind of a duplication of things that other organizations are doing in the community? So those are different things we'll be looking at when we give out those nonprofit grants.
I know there's some organizations out there now that are pretty established and have the credibility. So we certainly want to leverage that as best we can, that are already working with those, with the ALISs and Alexs, just to be fair, to make sure that, that it's being equitably distributed. Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Barbara, and then John. And I may ask the body, as we go forward, we have a very ambitious closed session today. If we could try to be succinct as possible, but definitely get your questions out.
I'll just make some comments, and you can answer my questions. We'll discuss later because I think there is need for discussion. Just a couple of observations on your demographics. You don't even list the ZIP code 23457. And it concerns me that the rural area is just left out of a lot of things. And I noticed the 56 only has three participants. And I'm kind of thinking that maybe your word is just not getting over the whole city. And it's not that there's no need, it's just that there's no exposure. And particularly, transportation is an issue. People just don't get to go up there. I noticed it last week in the Health Department, there are no COVID offerings down in the southern part of the city. There had been only two, and I had to really work hard to get those at the very first. So I'm just saying, I think you all are overlooking that area. And I also look at the racial demographics. Hispanics are left out. And I think we do have a sizable portion of. Hispanics are left out, and I think we do have a sizable portion, a proportion, a percentage of folks who are Hispanic, and they certainly ought to be in here.
Hey, thank you.
I don't think it's just other. I think we have a large percentage.
Thank you, John.
Yes, and the recent Congressional Budget Office study recognized that there's roughly an average transfer payment of $16,000 per household that's in that lower quintile group that you serve. That's all the things, Medicaid, all the things. So when you go back and look and getting people to this $53,000 income, do you take the income that they earn plus include all the transfer payments that they receive, which are obviously not subject to tax, to get to that $53,000? Or are you looking to just remove the need for the transfer payments and fill that whole difference with increased private sector income?
When you say transfer payments, do you mean like public benefits?
Yes, all the things. That's, that's what the average person, average household meets that demographic per Congressional receives on average. It's about $16,000 of value in food stamps, Medicaid, all those things. It's a number to the published report. I'm just curious, is that get you from the 36 earning to the 53? Or you're taking 36 and earning the difference and removing the need to receive the payments? I'm just trying to understand what gets you to 53, because there aren't a lot of $53,000 jobs in Virginia Beach.
Yes. So those income thresholds, at those points, they would likely not be eligible for SNAP or TANF or any of those public benefits administered by human services.
Right, because if they're getting them to start before they transition, they are receiving those, so you have to make, you make up the gap until they get there?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'm just trying to understand how that transitioned. Thank you.
Okay. Sabrina and then Michael. And please try to expedite. Yeah, I hate to rush you, but.
Good afternoon. I have two quick questions for you. The first question pertains to the last slide that you, that you stopped on. I believe it gave a breakdown of SWAM businesses. Is there a way to find out in that 73%, what businesses are represented? Are they minority? Are they woman-owned? Is there a way to break down that?
Yes, we could break those down. We could provide the raw data.
Please, that'd be great.
Okay, yes.
The other question concerns the outreach component that you talked about earlier. And I heard you mention several partners in that outreach effort. Do you have the faith-based community listed as a partner as well?
Yes. So one of our key areas that we will be doing outreach to is the churches in our community, because we know that they know where the people are that really need the support. And so we have an asset map of all the churches in the city of Virginia Beach, and they're a part of our outreach plan for the new year.
Great. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Michael?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be succinct as I can. I just want to take a moment first to recognize the entire United Way team as well as all of your partners in this extraordinary work. Same goes for members of the city's professional staff who have developed these policies. You know, we spend a lot of time in this body and even as a community talking about sometimes when things go wrong or what we do wrong, but I just can't let this briefing go by, Mr. Mayor, without recognizing and just really drawing attention to the fact that this is something the city has done really well. You heard Ms. Anderson's comments, and she will be missed at the beginning of this when she called this an innovative council. I don't know if that's, I'm not going to embrace that too, too readily, but I will tell you that this is an innovative program and partnership. I don't know of any other city in the entire country that's leveraged the federal support that we got for COVID to partner with nonprofits in an efficient manner that serves our citizens extraordinarily well. The credit goes to the United Way. It goes to the city staff for working with these nonprofit partners to arrange this, and we shouldn't gloss over it. We shouldn't just let this briefing go by, say, "Thank you, great job," and not recognize that this city council and this city government is partnering with nonprofit partners to unlock the, and really leverage the resources we receive from the federal government to direct them to people who are in need and to allow people, hopefully, the opportunity to thrive, which is the, which is a very, I think, great name. And I also want to take a moment to recognize the work that Mr. Moss did on this. Early on, we had a conversation about partnering with nonprofits to efficiently distribute these resources. Mr. Moss was an advocate for it, and I think that conversation really led to Mr. Duhany seizing upon that. And if I got the order of this wrong, you know, I don't want to take any credit from Mr. Duhany or your team, but this is a really great program, and it's something that we should all be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Thank you very much. Most appreciated. Okay, we're going to move on now to the flood protection program and capital improvement update. Hey, how you doing?
Very well, thank you. It's my pleasure this afternoon to introduce Leisha Pika, the Project Program Manager for Jacobs Engineering. Tony Utterbach will follow her, talk about the stormwater program, the flood protection program. And then I also want to acknowledge that Jeff Waller, the Chair of our Flood Protection Citizen Oversight Committee, is here, and he's, he's scheduled or available to make a few comments at the end. Before I turn this over to Leisha, I do want to point out that it was already mentioned today by the Vice Mayor. We are aware of the increases in our, in our programs. We're aware that our CIP projects are being impacted by the global crises. That's exactly what we need to talk about today. And I know this is a lengthy presentation. We recognize that city council is limited on time, but it's an important presentation, and I will do our best to get through it as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, LJ. So as LJ said today, we're going to talk about three things. We're going to give you an update on the supply chain market trends, explain some of the increases that we're seeing on the projects. Tony's going to give you an update on the project statuses, and then Jeff can give you a comment afterwards. So I want to start with the supply chain market and really why we're here to talk about this today. These are the seven master projects that are in the flood protection program, and you can see where our initial estimate is shown in that second column, and then the increase that we're seeing on a few of the projects and what percentage that increase is of the original estimate. You can see the increases are ranging from 7% to 74% above our initial estimate. So that's why I'm here today, to talk to you about what is happening and why is that occurring. So we're going to get into some of the details as we go through the presentation, but I want, before we go there, I want to remind you that your estimates that you had in the flood protection program were very conceptual in nature. You had done a few planning studies, but you hadn't done any detailed design, siding, relocations, traffic studies, or anything that goes into these kind of complex projects. So when we estimate projects as engineers, we use the American Cost Estimating Society standards. It's kind of an industry standard term that we use, and we rank estimates as a class. So you got class five, and what that means is you have the least amount of accuracy because it's a concept. It's usually used for screening alternatives against each other. So these estimates tend to have a range, they could be 20 to 50% less, or they could be 30 to 100% higher. As engineers, we have historically used that midpoint. Now we're starting to talk about ranges and maybe using a higher point when we estimate for budgeting, but we use the midpoint. So I bring that to your attention because the increases that we're seeing are within that range of the plus 50 to plus 100. So it's not an incredible increase, that's not reasonable, but it's also not something that we foresaw all of it. Some of the increases aren't just happening because they're conceptual in nature. As the design progresses, we refine it. We get better data, we get better information. We know what utilities are conflicting, we know all kinds of information about where these assets are going. So that affects, we have a better perspective on price then. And you were very wise to approve new design standards for the stormwater system. So these projects are complying with those standards, and that's costing a little bit more in some cases. But most of the problems or challenges with the essence that we have in are about supply chain economy, economic issues. And I'm going to run through a few of those for you, just to give you a flavor. Obviously, everybody's been impacted by fuel. We know that our gas prices have been up and down and unpredictable, but overall, they've been about 45% higher. And you can see, this is a couple years' perspective, goes back through December 2019 all the way through December 2022. So we've had this trend that's affecting that. And why do I show you that? Because every one of our projects is affected by fuel. All the machines, all the parts, all the labor you have, people have to get here. Equipment has to get here. It has to get made. The raw materials to make those pumps and pipes and concrete have to get transported somewhere. So it's not only the gasoline charges, it's aviation. Things have to get flown here from out of the country. Those have gone up significantly. We're seeing a decrease in the marine fuel, so things on those shipping containers are not costing as much for a fuel perspective. So this is something that all of these charges get factored into estimates in contractor bids. It's a risk. It's a volatility in the market that we can't control. But if you're going to put the one putting together a construction bid, you got to try to estimate your best, and that's going to be not in your favor most of the time. Another commodity, I'm going to run through about five of these graphs, and I'm going to explain it to you. This is a global economic pricing model. Jacobs has professional economists on staff who update these for me every quarter, and I like to share it with our clients. But you can see, two things I wanted to point out to hear. On the left side, you can see where I've highlighted that box in red, that's the current escalation cost. This is a concrete commodity. We have these for hundreds of commodities and labor categories. I've only pulled five of them to show you. The flood protection program's going to require quite a bit of concrete. We're going to be building tide gates, pump stations, all those sort of things require concrete, and concrete is already 15% higher. Well, what's more concerning to me, you can see on the right side of the curve, that blue line that I'm pointing to, that's historical average inflation extrapolated to the future. So if it's 2%, 3%, that's what we normally have seen in our lifespans of that kind of inflation. The above lines, those orange ones, that solid orange one in particular, is what the current economic model's looking for. So concrete prices aren't going to come back down to a normal escalated factor. We're going to have to continue monitoring this and figuring out how much is concrete going to cost us when we're ready to be able to build things. So that's a 15% escalation. The next one I want to show you is structural steel. Now, you steal on everything. It has a little bit of different economic impact, you can see here. While it's a 25% increase right now, inflation, an inflationary increase, you can see it kind of had a blip, and it came back down. So they're forecasting, I'm going to show you these because it's different. It depends on the commodity and the factor, and it takes hundreds of commodities to build these projects. So we're forecasting structural steel is going to come back down, which is good. However, just because structural steel's coming down, you can't assume that all piping materials are going to come down. Plastic pipe is not going to come back down, they're saying, and it's a 34% increase. So we use on stormwater pipe, any of those plastic materials that we're using are costing us a third more than they used to right now. And again, those, you can see that's not coming back down towards that blue line. So we're going to continue to have a challenge when it comes to paying for these type of materials. I think I have one more on here, pumps. You're going to be buying some giant pumps, so you're going to be at the high end of this escalation. Right now, it's just under 20, around 17, and it's still not going to come back. So it's not as, as, the gap is not as big as many of the other commodities, but I'm hoping that these charts give you a flavor for the diversity in the supply chain market and that impact that it has on your flood protection program. It's not easy to predict. It's not as consistent as it once was in the future, and all these individual components have to be priced out when we're ready to go to construction. When we're ready to go to construction, we're hiring a contractor, and that labor's not looking good anymore. Because if you're that guy, you have to estimate, or that gal, you have to estimate that risk of your, you don't want to lose money. So you're giving you a price, and you have to have all that risk factored in. So they have to look at all those commodity models and figure out what is this project going to cost, and what are the unknowns that they have to account for in their pricing. And we can see, we're not anticipating general contracting services to go down in the future. We're just anticipating them to level off a little bit, but then to have a slightly increase. But right now, we're paying 25% more for contracting services because of the risk that these contractors are forced to carry. And part of that consequence is we're seeing fewer bidders. People can't afford the risk, they can't afford higher bond rates, or they just are going out of business because of lack of labor shortage is also affecting those kind of things. So there's a bunch of factors that go into it. So in addition to that, all those commodity charges, it's uncertain when you're going to get the things that you order. If you're a contractor and you're ordering pipe, or you're building a pump station and you need a roof, HVAC, you build in a certain timeframe into your bid, when the time you order that, that purchase order in, the time it's delivered to you. You have people ready to stand by to order and make the construction and build it. It's 40-plus weeks now on roofs. It's almost that long on HVAC equipment. So it's really, it's taking unprecedented delays in the construction business, and that's because we can't get the materials here. So contractors have to estimate the best they can at that time, how long is this going to take? How much time do I have to have equipment not utilized? Or how many, how am I going to maintain my labor supply while I'm waiting on this for an uncertain amount of time? And then I just want to give you an example, a real-time example. I looked these up last week. And one of the uncertainties is nothing anybody can control, and that's just the supply chain of port congestion. I don't know if you've seen any of those pictures that are on the news occasionally. Our ports are incredibly congested with container trucks right now. You can see on the East Coast alone, that middle row, Houston has an average of 23 ships in at any time in its port, and they're taking 19 days to get out, to unload those. It's, that's the worst one on here, but I mean, the West Coast isn't much better. They're unloading them quicker, but they're just still having railcar shortages, so they're having troubles getting them unloaded. And the East Coast, we're having troubles with the empties, how to get them out of the way. So all of these things are kind of beyond our, our ability to predict, as we used to be very consistent, we were taking it for granted. Right now, we have about a 40% performance rate on port deliveries, meaning where people said they were going to get things, they're getting them about 40% of the time that they were promised. So a lot of that recently has been collective bargaining. The last six months, there's been a lot of collective bargaining in this country as well as in Europe. And so that's affecting everybody's ability to get product. So with all of this stuff said, I want you to recognize, this is important, but please don't panic. Please don't drop the mic today. Please don't drop the pencil and have a, don't get super worried just yet. These are significant, and I have, we have a strategy for helping to make sure this program remains within reasonable forecasted budget. But we're here to be transparent. You asked us to be transparent with you, you asked us to tell you things, and that's why we're here. We're here, these projects aren't going to be constructed for a couple years, the biggest ones that we're going to talk about, so we have time to monitor those conditions. We have time to get more grant funding. And you had a great presentation today from the gentleman from Becker. You've gotten a lot of grant funding, we're going to get some more. And I'm going to show you my last slide in a few minutes here, how we have an opportunity to participate in the design process and in turn reduce these projects' costs. So we're also looking at financial risk planning. We're working with the city manager and his staff to figure out, what if this does happen? You know, when would you have to make a hard decision, those kind of things? So there's plenty of time, and I'm not here to alarm you, but I am here to inform you that there's some hard decisions coming. But on the grants, you can see, on the flood protection program alone, you've already secured $40 million, more than $40 million in grants. That's awesome. But that's not the only ones we're going to secure. We also identified a few projects that we'll be able to submit for grants. We can submit for a brick grant for Lake Bradford, potentially in Southern Rivers, and there are other grants that we're going to submit on. So we're not giving up on the grants, we're not done. So then that's, that's going to help us fund that gap in what the program's costing and what we initially thought it was going to be. And this is my last slide, and I want to spend just a few minutes explaining this to you. You may recall, I think it was last February I was talking to you, and we talked about the progressive design build process, about why we recommended it. It was a collaboration between city and the contracting and design firm. The reason that it's so attractive for these large projects that we've bundled together is because there are no hidden costs ever. It's an open book estimating concept. That means you see the price, every little detail, the entire time. You know what profit's being made, you know what general conditions cost, you know what engineering's, or char, engineering fees are, you know, every subcontractor, you know how many bids they got for subcontractors, you know, which one they selected. And we're participating in those costing at the 30 and 60, and then the guaranteed maximum price, GMP stage. So we're seeing it in very detail. This is from, I think, a water plant project, I just grabbed one, but this is just to show you, there's a significant level of detail that goes into this estimate. They don't give us one number for each project. They give us thousands of rows in a spreadsheet. We're able to see, is there a material change? Maybe there's a different way of building it. These contractors are very creative and innovative. They come up with, they want to get these jobs done. They come up with, they want to get these jobs done. They want to get these done and have an example for their next job, a reference. So there's, there's an opportunity for us to take a look at, is this method that we're used to, taking too many labor hours, too many crews, too much equipment, there's a cheaper way of getting the same value that you're looking at? So that's what we're going to be looking at. In January, we're going to be issuing the first RFQ, Request for Qualifications, for the design, the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza and the Lakes mega project bundle, I call it, we call it the mega bundle, because it's so much of the great work that we're doing in the flood protection program. So that's the first step in getting one of these contractors on board. Then it'll probably be a couple of years before we actually get that guaranteed maximum price, because they got to do some design work and permitting. So I just want to encourage you that we have some time, and we have some strategies in place to control these costs. We're not just accepting the estimates that are being provided. Phil Pullen and Tony are making the engineers go back, even from the bridging documents, saying, you know, hey, why did this go up so much? Why do I have a C of 74% increase? And they're providing memorandums explaining why. What was a design refinement? What was a supply chain issue? Why it's happening? We're monitoring that, we're tracking that, we're not just accepting a new number, we're actually vetting them out to a higher level than we used to, just because of the uncertain economy we have today. So with that, I'm going to let Tony come up and show you a few bit of information about the specific projects, and I'll come back later if you have any specific questions about my part of it.
Hey, thanks so much.
That was cute. Good afternoon. Whoa, jumped right ahead. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm here to give you an update on the seven master projects in the flood protection program. I wanted to take a quick second to introduce two members of my team who are here today to help answer any questions you may have. I've got Mike Monday in the front row there, and CJ Bodnar. And also a quick shout out to the rest of the Stormwater Engineering Center, who's working really hard to deliver this program. All right, starting in the Lankorn Bay Drainage Basin, we have two projects. They are the First Colonial Road, Oceana Boulevard Drainage Improvement Project, and the Sea-Tac Drainage Improvement Project. You can see First Colonial Road there on the left side, and Sea-Tac is along South Bird Neck Road. Sea-Tac, we're going to be installing larger concrete pipes. That's important to note, concrete pipes. First Colonial Road, Oceana Boulevard Drainage Improvement Project, we are constructing a new BMP. The schedule for these two projects has not changed since our last presentation in September. We did just receive 30% design plans on Sea-Tac, so we do have a new estimate on that project. We expect to begin design on the First Colonial Road in early, next year, January. So the estimated cost increases for these projects, the first one, as I just mentioned, we haven't started design on that project, but we are showing an increase. And that's an increase not in the project itself, but we received a grant, a $2 million grant from the Community Flood Preparedness Fund, and we are adding that grant to the project. Until we get further information on the design, we just are taking that $2 million and putting it on the project. So that is definitely, that's, that's shown as an increase. The Sea-Tac Neighborhood Drainage Improvements Project, we just submitted 30% design plans. I mentioned concrete pipe. We have an increased cost estimate on that project. And we were also awarded a Community Flood Preparedness Fund grant for that project, which was appropriated last year. The next master project, Stormwater Green Infrastructure, there are two projects here. The Marsh Restoration in Back Bay and the Elizabeth River Floodplain Restoration Project at two locations along the Elizabeth River. So we're going to be constructing marsh terraces within Bonnie Cove in Back Bay, and we are constructing living shorelines and wetland restoration along the Elizabeth River at three sites that are park sites, and also a school, so all city-owned property for that project. So the schedules for these projects, we have 90% design on the Marsh Restoration in Back Bay. However, we have, the bid for construction schedule has slipped for this project approximately four months. That's due to acquisition issues we're having, trying to acquire the property for the staging area. We are working with legal and real estate to acquire this property, and we should have right of entry on that soon. The four-month delay typically wouldn't be an issue on a project, however, because this project has seasonal restrictions, it does push us into a third year of construction. And there is no change on the Elizabeth River project. We are just now beginning design on that project. So the cost increases, Marsh Restoration in Back Bay, I mentioned, we have 90% design plans, we have a more refined estimate, we have an increase of over $14 million. The good news, we just found out a couple of weeks ago, we have received a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation for $9.9 million. So that will offset a lot of that increase. Moving into Eastern Shore Drive Phase One, we have nine projects in this master project. They are shown here. The ones in yellow are being grouped into one construction contract, and that is because they are interconnected and they function together. The ones in orange are also being grouped, because they are rather small projects and they have similar scopes. Beginning with the first five projects in the Eastern Shore Drive, the first one is in construction, the Cape Henry Canal Relocate Gravity Sanitary Sewer. This project needed to be complete before we could begin the rest of the program, and as I mentioned, it's under construction and should be complete early next year. The next four projects are the ones that we are grouping into one construction contract. It includes two pump stations, elevating Lynn Haven Drive, and widening and deepening the Cape Henry Canal for additional storage. The final projects in Eastern Shore Drive, the North Shore Drive and Cape Henry Drive Street Drainage Improvement Projects, we will improve stormwater runoff by adding curb and gutter and inlets in this area. The picture you see there is the existing Pointe Sienna Pump Station. We are replacing that pump station, it is 40 years old, and we are constructing a new pump station called Vista Circle, and it's at the intersection of Shore Drive and Page So the schedule for these projects has remained unchanged, except for the Elevate Lynn Haven Drive, which we have accelerated in order to get it to the same level of design as the other three projects that it's been grouped with. So as I mentioned, with Cape Henry Canal Gravity Sewer relocation, it will be finished mid-2023, and then we are beginning design on the North Shore Drive, the Cape Henry Drive, and the Pointe Sienna Pump Station early next year, and Vista Circle comes later, beginning design in mid-24. So the cost increases on these projects, the first four is relatively small, it is related to construction inspection services that we are budgeting on these projects. The Pointe Sienna Pump Station Project and the Vista Circle Pump Station Project have a little bit more of an increase, and that is not an increase on the cost itself, but a budgeting increase, because we were originally going to use the parent project to fund acquisition on those projects. We've now moved that budget to these projects for, to track them better. We were awarded the $25.1 million grant from FEMA that was mentioned earlier, and this $25.1 million is significant for this program to fund all of the projects. Moving on to the largest program, Princess Anne, Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza and the Lakes, the largest program, also with the largest cost increase, as you saw. The projects in yellow are the ones being grouped into that mega design-build project that Leisha mentioned. The, the scope of projects, we're going to start in Windsor Woods, the Tide Gate Project, we are finally under construction. We had issued notice to proceed this month. That is the sign you are seeing. You can see this sign off of 264. So we are really excited to get this project moving. You should start to see some more activity early next year. The Clubhouse Road Project is complete, so we will no longer be reporting on that project, but the sign is still out there, because it's right there at the location where we're doing the Bow Creek Stormwater Park. South Plaza Trail, Presidential Boulevard, and Old Forge Red Lion, we are doing pipe improvements on those projects. And in Windsor Woods, we're also doing the pump station flood barriers, Thalia Creek, Lake Trashmore improvements, and those are all part of the design-build project, the ones in red. Moving on to Princess Anne Plaza, we have two projects in that area, Bow Creek Stormwater Park, that will be constructed in two phases, and the North London Bridge Creek Tide Gate Pump Station and Barriers, that is another project in that combined design-build project. Moving on to the lakes, we have three projects in the lakes area. They include Holland Road Gate, the flood barriers, and South London Bridge Creek Channels and Gate, and all three of these projects are in that design-build contract. So the schedule for these projects has not changed. We are on track to issue that RFQ in January next year. And the rest of the schedules in the program have also not changed. Now, I mentioned Clubhouse Road is complete, we will take that off of the list. The Windsor Woods Tide Gate will be, is beginning construction now, it will be complete in early 2025. South Plaza Presidential Boulevard, we are giving notice to proceed to the contractor early next year. Old Forge Red Lion, we just opened, we gave notice to proceed, I'm sorry, we gave notice to proceed to the contractor yesterday. And the Bow Creek Stormwater Park Section One, we expect to advertise that project for construction early next year. Moving on to the cost increases, these are all of the projects in the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza and the Lakes Program, and you can see the ones that have increases are the pump stations, the gates, even Bow Creek Stormwater Park, that's a haul project. We are digging dirt, so we're hauling all of that dirt away, so the fuel increases are impacting the cost on that project. So here are some of those costs they're attributed to, like I said, the increase in concrete pipe, that's a big one. Steel prices, like Leisha mentioned, reinforced concrete. Southern Rivers Watershed, we have three projects. They're shown here, the West Net Creek Bridge, Punggol Ferry Road Improvements, and Sand Bridge-New Bridge Road Intersection. We're going to be constructing in-water movable gates at West Net Creek Bridge. We are raising the intersection at Sand Bridge-New Bridge and installing a box culvert. We are raising Punggol Ferry Road from Blackwater Road to the west side of the Punggol Ferry Road Bridge Approach, approximately two miles. The schedule for these projects has not changed for Sand Bridge-New Bridge, that remains the same. We are under design, we just started design on that project. And for the Punggol Ferry Road Improvements Project, the end date is still the same, but we have reduced the construction duration on that project. And then finally, the West Net Creek Bridge Project, we are going to deliver this by design-build. We just completed the procurement to select the design engineer and the owner's rep, and we will begin preliminary engineering early next year. So the cost increase for Punggol Ferry Road Improvements is related to a study that we recently received, so that price was further refined to update it to current estimate. Lake Bradford Chubb Lake, we have four projects in this master project. We have the Pump Station and Outfall Project, the Lake Bradford Dredging Project, the Lake, Lake Pleasure House Outfall Project, and the Church Point Thurgood BMP Drainage Improvements Project. So right now, the Lake Pleasure House Outfall Project is under construction. Lake Bradford Dredging, we are dredging two ditches that outfall to Lake Bradford. Church Point Thurgood BMP and Drainage Improvements, we are installing a new wet pond, and stormwater infrastructures, pipes, and drainage annulants. And Lake Bradford Chubb Lake Pump Station Outfall, we'll be constructing a brand-new pump station with an outfall into the bay. The schedules have not changed for these projects. Lake Pleasure House Outfall is in construction, as I said, it will be done early next year. Lake Bradford Dredging, we just had notice to proceed, it will be done late next year, and we will begin design on Church Point Thurgood BMP Drainage mid-2024. And then the Lake Bradford Chubb Lake Pump Station Outfall Project, design-build project, this schedule remains the same. We're going to begin the bridging documents early next year. So the cost increases on this project are related to the final preliminary engineering report, which we received this year. When we originally had estimates for these projects, they were very high-level and very preliminary. When the preliminary engineering report was completed, we had newer estimates that were based on $20,22. We did apply for, I'm sorry, we did apply for a grant, the FEMA grant for that project in the amount of $35 million. So that went in in November. Hopefully, we get that grant to offset these cost increases. Moving on to Central Resort District, three projects, the 24th Street Culvert, the 21st and Baltic Intersection Improvement Project, and then the Central Resort District Drainage Improvement Project, although it's pointing to a spot on the map, it actually includes the entire area that we're evaluating from Laskin Road all the way down to 17th Street. These are the scopes of these projects. We are going to be constructing new stormwater infrastructure, a large pump station that outfalls to the ocean, it will include tide gate and stormwater pipes throughout the area. So right now, we are in the very preliminary stages of this project. We just finished the procurement to select the design engineer and the owner's rep, because this project will be delivered by design-build. We expect preliminary engineering to begin early next year. We are not showing a cost increase on this, because we don't have any new information to give you new information for cost. However, we are anticipating an increase on this project, because the original estimates were based on the old stormwater design standards and $20,17. So those new estimates, when they come in on the preliminary engineering report are completed, we will update with new information. And hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to do some value engineering on this project. And at this time, I was going to ask if Jeff Waller, he is the chairman of the Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board, to come up and say a few words.
Yeah, Patrick? Hello, I'm Jeff Waller. I'm the chairman of the Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board, quite a mouthful there. City Council passed a resolution establishing and naming of the board to provide oversight on the seven major project areas and the 30 individual projects identified in the 2021 Bond Referendum, and on the elimination of the backlog of maintenance of cities' legacy ditches, canals, and ponds. The board has seven members, one of which is here today. Usha Elswarapu is the vice chair of the board. She is here today. We have seven members. The resolution Council passed established that the board should come to city council every two months to give a public briefing. This is the first public briefing. The seven members have a variety of background, but they're very interested and excited to be part of this effort. The boards met four times. In that time, we've organized, we selected a chairman and a vice chairman. Councilman Moss offered some guidance that we should try to track funding and keep the public informed. Our board has received from city staff a broad program briefing and briefings on individual projects. We have several more that we've identified that we are going to do in the future. I don't want to restate the status of everything that you just received on these projects, but from my perspective, some of the highlights are, we're starting the construction on the Tide Gate Project at Windsor Woods. We're, we've started procuring services to get the preliminary engineering reports, both at the Central Resort District and the Southern Rivers Watershed. So we're moving forward in a lot of areas around the city. The city's obtained grant money, which is great news. Our board meets the second Thursday of every month, 1:30 PM over in Town Center. We're on the seventh floor of the Clark Nixon Building. Our meetings are open to the public, and if the public attends and desires to, they can comment. We have a website, it's accessible from the ripple effect website. We have an email address, which I think will be up and running soon. People can go to that website, and if they have a question or comment, they can email it to us. As you've seen, most of the work is in the future, so there's not much to report on today, on top of the in-depth briefing that you just had. But I have a request, as we move forward, the briefings I give to council can be more useful if we get feedback on what you if we get feedback on what you find useful, what you expect from the board, and any action items you'd like for the board to take. So this is short today. Hopefully, some of it's helpful. And the members of the board look forward to being part of this effort.
Yeah, Guy.
Thank you, Mr. Waller. I thank you for your presentation. Did you give us that website so the folks that are watching and listening could...
It's www.bbgov.com/rippleffect.
Thank you.
Guy?
Well, I just want to say, first of all, I think this shows to the 72% of the public that voted for this referendum and the other doubters should now be convinced that we really do have a very competent team and a very good approach how to get this done. And I do think that citizen oversight really brings another independent voice that the citizens can go to and gives a second set of eyes. And I always think people a bit more distant ask the questions that other people don't think to ask because they're too close. So it provides you a little bit of protection against groupthink, which I think is great. And I think this was the biggest bond referendum that ever went to the voters from a city in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I think that's what someone told me. So I know a lot of people are watching, and I applaud the staff for how we went out and sought grants. But I do think there's a way ahead downstream. And I know that I can trust my good colleague and friend there, Michael, to keep a big watch on that biggest project there in Princess Sand Plaza, the woods and the lakes. But this is a huge tribute to both the public that bought into the investment strategy. Because you only have to look around the country. I've always said my biggest fear is we won't get Phase One in before Mother Nature decides to test us. That's my biggest fear. But we are on a great path to high and dry by 2045. I hope that's something we can get to. It won't be inexpensive, but replacing your home and your lifestyle is not inexpensive either. We see many communities around the nation that one built stuff but then didn't maintain it or didn't build it, and their communities take decades to recover. So this is an investment in the future, and hats off to all of you. And I wish you all the best as you continue to execute God's work.
Okay, anybody else at this point? I want to thank you for that presentation. I think, you know, it's a dynamic program that you're working on. It was a high-city, especially council, you know, objective and priority. And you're doing God's work. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, Mr. Dehaney.
Mr. Mayor, the council at this time. Our office will come to give council an update.
Report to council on the annual findings based on our audit. Before we begin, in speaking with the auditor, he and I would like to extend to you all an apology. Obviously, it's going to be good news. That's going to be reported by our external auditor. However, you were not provided the information beforehand so council could review it and ask any questions, prepared questions. So with that being said, that is not the standard that you all expect from your city staff, your auditor's office, or your manager's office. So I'd like to extend an apology for not being able to provide the information to you all before this presentation.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
The auditor and I, the auditor and I, and our staff and our contractor will sit down after this and have a discussion to make sure something like this doesn't happen again.
You're very gracious, Patrick. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, city council. City manager. It's an honor to present to you our findings for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. And to start off our presentation, we have with us Logan Booth from Cherry Beckett Advisory, LCC.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you all, city manager. Thank you all for having me here today. Do we have our slides available, Dina? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry for the technical difficulties. So my name is Logan Booth. I'm going to audit senior manager with Cherry Beckett, the city's external auditors. And I'm here today to deliver the results of the fiscal year 2022 audit of the annual comprehensive financial report. So here's an agenda for my presentation today. I will begin with delivering the results of the audit. We will discuss some of the significant audit matters, some items relating to internal controls over financial reporting, some of the items required under the government auditing standards, other matters, and then I will close with some upcoming financial reporting changes, and then open it up to council and anyone for any questions. So we issue our audit report yesterday with a clean, unmodified audit opinion. That's a great result, and that's just a compliment to everyone in the city, including finance, assistance from internal audit, and really everyone within the various departments that assist over the course of the audit fieldwork. So our audit opinion includes an opinion over the government auditing standards. Under the government auditing standards, we did not uncover any material weaknesses over internal controls over financial reporting. Our audit report also includes an opinion over the specifications of cities and towns and counties as issued by the Auditor of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we did not identify any instances of findings or issues as a result of our audit procedures. Also included in our audit is an audit of the city's major federal awards, also referred to as the single audit under the Uniform Grant Guidance. We, again, issued a clean audit opinion on the single audit over the city's major federal programs, and we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates to the city's major federal awards. Over the course of our audit fieldwork, we would be required to accumulate and also present to you all if there were any corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of our audit procedures. I'm pleased to report that we did not uncover any corrected or uncorrected misstatements as a result of our procedures. There are certain qualitative aspects relating to the financial statements. The city's significant accounting policies are described in Note 1 of the annual comprehensive financial report. Most notably was a new accounting policy called GASB Statement Number 87 relating to how the city accounts for leases. And that was effective for fiscal year 2021. Next, as a part of our audit procedures, we do perform specific procedures over related party transactions, with those related parties specifically being the school division as well as the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation. Our audit procedures noted that all of the transactions with the related parties were in the normal course of business, and there were not anything significant or unusual with those transactions. Again, we also perform additional procedures over any significant or unusual transactions. And again, we are not aware of any significant or unusual transactions that the city entered into during fiscal year 2022 or since then, since the year ended. There are certain significant estimates that management adopts as they complete the financial statements. And those significant estimates require certain assumptions and management input, which we perform audit procedures over. And those significant estimates include allowance for doubtful accounts as it relates to property and real estate taxes, depreciation over capital assets, certain actuarially computed OPEB and pension asset liabilities, and then the risk management liabilities for claims and other self-insurance items. Under the audit contract, we do perform certain non-audit services, with specifically being the preparation of the data collection form, which is a filing to the federal audit clearinghouse of the city's federal awards. We identify certain individuals within management who oversee that process as a non-audit service. The auditing standards require us to be independent of the city, and I can affirm today that we are indeed independent of the city as it relates to our audit services. And then lastly here, we have some additional required communications that we are required to provide to you all under the auditing standards. Over the course of audit fieldwork, if we were to encounter any difficulties or disagreements with management, we would be required to communicate them today. We are pleased to note there were no such difficulties or no such disagreements. Everyone within finance and the various departments that we have the pleasure of working with is great. It's definitely a joint effort in completing the audit of the financial statements. On the far side there, the management representation letter, we do receive a sign of representation letter from management prior to issuance, and we received that yesterday before we issued our report in the afternoon. If management had consulted any other CPA firms or any other accountants on certain contentious topics, we would be required to discuss those with management and present those to you all today. We are not aware of any consultations with any other external CPA firms. Had there been any findings or issues, we would be required to communicate them. You know, we did not uncover any findings related to contracts, compliance, regulatory items. And lastly, if there were any fraud or illegal acts that were uncovered as a result of our audit or we became aware of over the course of the audit, we would be required to present those to you all today. And again, we're not aware of any fraud or illegal acts. And then just some items of our reporting of the various components of the financial statements. Included in the annual comprehensive financial report is the required supplementary information. Our opinion is not to include a specific opinion on the required supplementary information. We review this information as it relates to the basic financial statements, which is covered under our audit opinion. The other supplementary information includes the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which our opinion does cover under Uniform Grant Guidance. And lastly, there are the statistical sections and the introductory sections of the annual comprehensive financial report, which, again, our opinion is not a direct affirmation over those items. They are reviewed and opined on in relation to the basic financial statements. So lastly, just a few upcoming financial reporting changes that we've already been in discussion with management on, and those are GASB Statement Number 96 for subscription-based information technology arrangements, and then GASB Statement Number 101 regarding compensated abscences. And we'll be working with management over the next couple of years as those become effective. So with that, those are all of the required communications and the results of the audit. So I will open that up to any questions or comments from council.
On that last slide, is an explanation of those two things in the report. Is there a narrative explanation of those?
In the financial report?
Yes.
No, those would not be required to be disclosed in the financial report.
I know they're not disclosed yet, but is a narrative description about what they're going to require in the report?
No.
Can we provide it separately, please?
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Certainly. Thank you all.
Okay, so... We're still auditing. So the second part of our presentation, I'm going to break up Kevin Cabasso. He's going to share with you some of the numbers that the auditor went over to give us our unmodified opinion.
Hey, welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. As Latisha said, I'm here to go over the audited numbers. So I know you're all on a tight schedule, so I'll go through these pretty quick. But what we see here is here's our statement of net position. This will be your traditional balance sheet. And as you'll see, within our ACFIR, the city also has three component units as well. So you know, we have the Virginia Beach Development Authority that through different support agreements, we are fiscal responsible for. So they are what's considered a blended component unit. So they are reported within the city numbers here that you see. And then we also have, of course, the schools and the VB CDC, the Community Development Corporation, that are discreetly presented component units. So they're reported in the ACFIR as well. So really, thing what I wanted to focus here on this net position statement is the middle numbers here, our net pension liability and our net OPEB liability. You'll see that the net pension liability for June 30, 2022, decreased by about 50%. So it went down from about $1.2 million total to $635 million. And a lot of that is based off of the investment results for VRS that they had in 2021. They had about 21% return on investments. So that led to that liability going down a significant amount for this year. Unfortunately, looking at next year, they were at about 1% return. So this number is going to shoot right back up again next year. So while it's good news today, when we're here next year, we'll see the other side. So going on the next slide, we'll get down to the general fund. You'll see here the general fund that we're talking about. In total, we had about $18 million of difference between expenditures and revenue, this leading to an ending fund balance of 34, or sorry, $349 million. Total revenues were about $56 million over budget, with majority of that being in our local taxes. And I'll talk more a little bit later about how that all works out. And expenditures under budget of $111 million. So like I said, the fund balance, $349 million. We had total reservations of 150, getting us down to that unassigned fund balance of $180 million, or what we have 13.5% of our FY '23 revenues. So just going over what some of those reservations are. You can go back one more. Thanks. So with reservations, we have inventories and receivables. So your inventories for public works, for police, for aquariums, total about $5 million. You have our loans. We have the non-interest loans to our rescue squads, to our volunteer fire rescue squads that we give out. We have the, of course, we know the Vanguard loan. So those non-interest loans that we've poured out, they're, you know, restricted from fund balance. So that's pulled out here. We also have the CSB portion of fund balance. So this is money that we have received from the state. That's restricted, so it's not part of your unassigned fund balance. And then our items such as the school reserve fund, the school reversions. So we know that they under-executed about $21 million of their budget. So that was returned to the city that they have available to appropriate. Our school chew-up, so as I mentioned, where we were about $60 million over budget in local revenue. That's their share of the school revenue sharing formula. So they are receiving about $27 million as part of the school chew-up from FY '22. And then your last items are items from the FY '23 budget that have been use of fund balance. So that's getting us down to our $180 million unassigned fund balance in the general fund for FY '22, which, again, is about 13.5% of the '23 budgeted revenues. This right here, just a little graph of the past 10 years for what that unassigned fund balance has been. We see consistently it's been around the 9% to 10%. We know that city council policy is between 8% to 12% is what city council policy has been. Of course, with the past couple of years, with the uncertainty of everything, you know, it's fluctuated a little bit more. But yes, we are right now over that policy of the 8% to 12%, and we're at 13.5%. So just want to give another breakdown a little bit of the general fund revenues. We see all the items in green here are all tax, the local taxes that, of course, have came in over budget. We know during the budget in the middle of pandemic was, of course, not the easiest thing. So we always budget lower. We're happy to see that the economy, you know, rebounded quicker than we expected. And a lot of those local taxes, sales tax, hotel meal tax, have come in well in over budget, leading us back to that $56 million of general fund over-realized revenue. Going back to the general fund expenditures on the next slide, we see that the total expenditures were $1.3 billion, with the majority of that being transfers to the schools. It's came in around $450 million. We had salaries, total salary expenditures of a little over $300 million in the general fund. Then, of course, other operating expenditures, transfers to CIPs and things like that. Just wanted to give a quick breakdown of the major enterprise funds that we have. We have the water and sewer... We have the water and sewer, stormwater, waste management. And we see that those two are all still have a healthy cash balance, balance overall. So on the side here, you see the total operating cash for water and sewer, for instance, of 117 million. And then your second line of restricted cash is your CIP cash. So that's for Capital Project Water and Sewer and Stormwater. You see that they have healthy cash balances as well for future CIP projects. Going to the next slide about some more enterprise funds for their revenues, we see charges for service, stormwater, waste management revenues continue to do well, your expenditures here, and all leading to positive changes in net position for the two major funds. Just wanted to highlight the, the TIP fund here, as we know, is a big special revenue fund that we have. We had taxes continue to increase compared to prior years as we've coming out of the pandemic, back more to, to what we are used to. And we see that revenue exceeded expenditures by $22 million. So this leaving an ending fund balance in the TIP fund of about $50 million. And we know that that's used mainly to cover future debt service as these projects come to light and we start having the debt for them. The next one, just the TAP fund as well. So this is advertising for Virginia Beach. Hotel meal tax continues to increase from the prior years, therefore leaving an ending fund balance of 7.5 million. Last thing I just wanted to touch on here was your, the annual payments that we have for the long-term debt, such as principal retirement, interest on the debt, city pension and OPEB. So in total, that's about $300 million of expenses for both the city and the schools. Wanted to highlight too, that we received the award from the GFoa for our Act for last year, and we will, we have our PAFR there as well, the Popular Annual Financial Report that we will be putting out in the next couple of weeks for FY '22. So with that being said, we have the, our December interim coming up, January interim, and other budget items coming up throughout the year.
Okay, outstanding presentation. Any questions or concerns, Mr. Moss?
On slide 33, could you later provide a breakout between, on the pensions, what part was direct pensions for this year and what part was catch-up for underperformance or making up the amortization of the deficit?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you all very much. Good stuff. Okay, at this point, we're moving on to council discussion initiatives and comments. Anything? Hey, Rosemary?
I think a lot of us have been hearing from the public that there's more of a need for vocational education. And I just want to throw something out for us to start thinking about, nothing to act on immediately, but I, I think this affects us and, and the schools, that maybe we might consider doing a, a joint task force between the council and the schools on vocational education and all the business community, as well as some members of the council and the school board. So just wanted to mention that as something to be thinking about moving forward.
Okay, great. Anybody else, Guy?
Just briefly, I'd like to give congratulations to the Sea-Tac neighborhood. They're now moving forward with getting a well-deserved recognition, which I hope will formally come sometime early next year, as a national historic register of historic, National Register of Historic Places. Their application's complete. Helen J. Gardens, you may recall, was the other African-American neighborhood in Virginia Beach that was under consideration there, and their application was approved, and they are now on the national registers. I understand. Congratulations to them as well, but most pleased to be at the Sea-Tac Civic League meeting last night when Mark Reed, our first ever-present historic preservation guru in Virginia Beach, who shepherded this process done. So congratulations to all of those people.
Historic Preservation Commission continues to do some really good work.
They do indeed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else at this point?
I just want to pick up on the vice mayor's point. That was something that we heard across the board throughout the city was OTEC education. And when you talk to the industry, they'll also tell you that to feed the high school piece, you really got to start creating the interest in middle school. That's really where the first pump is. But if we are going to be building four high schools over some X period of time, it's probably wise to define what the requirement is for VOTECH before we start committing to designs of schools and knowing what they cost. But I do know from talking to people in the business community, that they're very interested in what they can contribute in terms of equipment and outfitting of spaces, not the shell space, but what they can do. And I do think she's right, the employers are the best people to identify the requirement that, and this is a time to be doing that, especially with the new council, a large number of new council, and a new school board. Exactly. To go back and revisit that strategy on those four high schools to have a, make sure they address VOTECH, because that is where the future jobs are in certification and trades and specialty skills. They're not necessarily a college degree, but I wholeheartedly agree with you, Vice Mayor, you are right on target there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else at this point? You know, if I could just make it, you know, a point here. You know, I'll tell you what, this is a bittersweet moment as we end our first 60 years, and we have a number of our colleagues at this table cycling off, and we have a new group coming in. But I just want to say that hopefully tonight, you know, when we get to the point of old business and new business, that we pause and reflect for the thanks of the contributions of the council members that have served with us. We have, as a council, over the years, have been tested, we have been challenged, and I believe as a group, we have came through. Do we always agree? No, but then again, we're not really supposed to. You know, but the point is though, that I think that we have come together as a team. And when we hear about all the things, I don't think we can minimize, and I'll, I'll repeat this later, our accomplishments as a body, as a unit, over the years, having gone through challenges, the challenges of COVID. And you know, the question, you know, arises that name a city who made it through COVID better than we did. And today, I have not been able to find somebody to come up with another, you know, city. And I think it speaks well, not only to our council, it speaks well to our management, you know, it speaks well to our public. And when we heard today from United Way and WIS, you know, these were the partners that we had going forward, you know, with dealing with the COVID. And don't forget, when we found out about it, it was supposed to be two, two months, remember? That was about, about it. But it, guess what? It took about two years. So we've been through it, we've been through COVID, and then murder thing. And you know, our city is, you know, compared to a lot of other places, sound, but I might hopeful, hopefully that, you know, we take time to reflect, you know, tonight during, you know, as we close out a year together as a family, and sincere thanks, you know, to the people that have served us so well. Okay? At this point, can we get into council agenda review?
Yes. So I'd like to ask the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I, before you start, I wanted to point out on two of the ordinances, there were minor amendments that we are proposing. On item I-12, Mr. Schuman pointed out that there was a graphical error as it related to the insurance. And so that, we'll, we'll pass around a version that fixes that typo and also increases the commercial general liability insurance limits to 1 million per occurrence and 2 million in the aggregate, as recommended by our risk management administrator. That will be over here and passed out to you shortly. The Second Amendment was in item 16, which has already been passed around the table, and that simply corrects the CIP project number on that item. So I'm sorry to interrupt, Vice Mayor, but I wanted to point out those two.
No, I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
No, appreciate it, Mark.
So I wanted to ask the council, we give you something just slightly different tonight, and it's because of number two under audits to resolutions, recognizing and renaming the Bayside Recreation Center. The Jones family will be here with Louis's widow, Ellen, and his grandson Casey and his great-grandson. If you wouldn't mind, we could do that first, and, and before we get into all of the heaviness of the rest of the agenda, we do have two speakers on it, so we'll need to, you know, have the two speakers, but then recognize them. Is, is that okay?
Yes.
You have to have them on the agenda.
Okay, so that'd be number one on the.
Okay, good. I'm just asking.
Thank you, John.
So we'll do that, do that first. Okay, so then to be pulled would be number three. Number nine, number 10.
Only one on number nine, I believe. Is that right? Nine C?
That's correct.
All of nine is nine C.
Nine C? Okay. Nine C. And then under planning, number two. So going back to consent, any other issues under ordinance and resolutions?
Barbara? Just a comment on item 11. Yes, we can go ahead and withdraw this and have from weeks' consideration, but I think we do need to look at this because apparently they really haven't reviewed what has been submitted. And to tell me exactly where it's going to be, I asked to kind of see that. But I also, of course, would want to make sure that it's being with, it is not encroaching in the drainage easement as well as the waterway. I think it was an encroachment into both areas. So that needs to be looked at. And I would just comment that when we considered an encroachment back in April of 2021, we have, my, my motion had been that we would have a focused study group with the staff and Fish and Wildlife about the bottom that had been dedicated to the city, and we sort of dropped the ball on that, but we're picking that up. And certainly, I think before we go forward with any more encroachments, we want that to, to, to be looked at. So yes, we can withdraw this from what was submitted, but I think we do need to look at it and make sure it's, it's where it needs to be, especially as far as the drainage easement, because I don't see that that's not being encroached on.
So is that enough, Mr. Manager? Or do you need the other direction?
Um, Vice Mayor, I'm aware, Ms. Henry and I had a couple of conversations about it, so Ms. Henry's just resetting kind of what we already committed to.
Okay, John? On item 10, I'll be abstaining, but I have a letter and I have a statement I want to make. And on item 16, I'm voting no, and I'll explain that after the vote. And are you going, and we're doing planning next, right? You want my information on that?
Well, it's, number one is Orp Ventures, which is Beach District 6. Guy?
I'm okay with it.
So the staff has said denial and planning commissions approval. Are you okay for approval?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Aaron.
I'll be abstaining on item I-14. I opposed Mark, even though I could vote on it, I just don't, I don't think the perception of voting on that would be well taken, so I'll be abstaining on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number three, AT Associates. District 6, Beach, Guy?
Yes.
Consent?
Yep, number one.
Number four, Nicola Georgiev?
Ten.
Five to eight, 0810th Street?
Yes.
Six, Host My Home?
Yes.
Seven, JD Enterprises?
Yes, I would point out that on that one, the references to 512 19th Street, there's some other addresses there as well as 512, I think are included. I was a little confused by that, but if you go back and look at them, it's 512, 516, and one more address, I can't remember. Three. The next one is 516, with a bunch of units. Here's the, here's the, it's 516.
Yeah.
Send a separate one, all right. There's still, there's still one. Oh, I see, now they got, here's 518 is kind of in that one. All right, they're all there. If we can go out with a bag and show it to them. I don't know why there are three of the, three addresses in two.
I have no idea. Anybody else on anything?
Yeah, Madam Vice Mayor, going back to ordinance number 13, I just want to make sure that we assure the public that Burden Station isn't forced to fall on its sword for the sake of another project. Let the public say that, since it's in our district, that we're taking something from Burden Station for another project, not against that project. We just have some assurances that Burden Station will move forward.
And stay on time.
And stay on time.
Let me step.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or from the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 3, and that would be District 6, formerly Beach, and District 6, formerly Beach. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 7, and that would be Lynch, Lynch versus City of Virginia Beach, and then also City versus Kellum Gurwitz and Excel Paving. And then personal matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation specific to public officers, appointees, or employees from any public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1, and that would be council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilor Verlucchi?
Hi.
Councilor Brandt?
Hi.
Councilor Henley?
Hi.
Councilor Holt?
Hi.
Councilor Miles?
Hi.
Councilor Moss?
Hi.
Councilor Rouse?
Hi.
Councilor Verluc?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Hi.
Okay, at this point, we can recess into executive.